I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, February 5th, 2020 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Hampton, who is absent and excused. This is a time in the meeting when we call for public comments. It's a chance for members of the audience to address the Commission on a topic not scheduled for tonight's meeting and to please hold your comments to three minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, nobody in the audience that would want to speak to public comments. So with that, I will entertain an approval of the minutes for January 22nd or a motion.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of approval of minutes from January 22nd, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Hampton, who is absent and excused. Come to, is there any new business this evening? No new business. So with that, we will go ahead and hand it over to Dave Boyd with the City of Bothell, Senior Planner, Community Development, and he'll be speaking tonight on downtown public space, and this is a continued hearing.
Thank you, and good evening. So tonight, we are continuing the discussion, and we had hoped to be able to complete this, the work on this tonight and have you bring a recommendation, but this one's proved to be a little more difficult to come to a resolution that balances all the desires. So we're providing you with a kind of a new option tonight, and we're looking at this as kind of a bookend, or we're trying to bookend the issue, and maybe we'll fall somewhere in between the two options that we're going to focus on tonight. But we wanted to get additional feedback from the Commission before actually coming to you with a packet for final recommendation. So just as a reminder again, and for the public, the basis for these designated public space to be developed with private development is in the community vision of the downtown plan that calls for a sequence of unfolding spaces that inspire people to walk and to linger in the center of the city. So the changes, I'm just going to focus on the changes from previous packets here. So they're, we are proposing, and included in the memo, one addition to the regulations that we started off discussing about the quality of public spaces to encourage projects with common exterior mailboxes, and that would typically be on a townhome project like the one in the picture here, to incorporate them with their public open space. It's a minor change, it's something that came from staff, it's something that we try to encourage in subdivisions, and it seemed to translate to this kind of development. So that's one minor change. Also, in response to a comment last time about the ability to transfer open space from one project to another within the downtown subarea and concerns that perhaps there should be a limit on how far that should go, we are proposing a half-mile limit, and that's a common range that is used for walk sheds for things like transit stations, fixed transit stations, quarter-mile, half-mile. I went with half-mile because we have allowed transfers that were in between a quarter and a half-mile, and we have a proposal for one that's about four tenths of a mile. So that seemed like a reasonable limit if the Commission does want to establish a limit rather than just allowing any transfer within the downtown subarea. And then the main part that we want to focus on tonight are the revised proposals for the amount of public space that we require. Last time, we introduced the notion of changing from a requirement that's based on per-unit requirement to one that's based on the residential floor area for residential uses. That's how, the office requirement is based on office floor area, and what we had discovered in our previous analysis was that just reducing the requirement per unit perhaps got us to something that would work better for apartment projects, but really reduced the amount that we're requiring for townhomes quite a bit below what they're, what we're requiring and what they've been able to provide. So we were looking for, ideally, we're looking for a magic number that would work for both, and that's what was presented last time. Tonight, we're presenting, in tonight's packet, we're decided that we really had to make a distinction between townhome and apartment because the same percent for both didn't seem to be working. So those are the two proposals that we're going to focus on tonight. So here is, and we also made some changes to this, this matrix, this analysis matrix that hopefully makes it a little bit easier to read. We separated out the adjustments that we've looked at on a per-unit requirement, and I also, we also added a recent proposal for micro-apartments to kind of illustrate that. That was another project that, type of project that made us think that a requirement based on floor area rather than number of units would be more workable because frankly, there are some real issues with these micro-apartment on what constitutes a unit. So here, just, and I'm putting this up here, we're going to really focus on the next one, but current requirement of 150, or 150 square feet per unit in the downtown transition and the corridor districts, and 100 square feet per unit in the downtown neighborhood district, we looked at a couple of different options. I put in here the 60% option, which would take it down to, from 150 to 90, and from 100 to 60 per unit. Also, I'm showing for the Ross Road Apartments, which is one project that we've kind of focused on because it illustrates these issues well. It's a, it's a project that's just been through pre-app, so it's, it's in the schematic design phase. They've come back with a new proposal, a revised proposal that proposes 8,353 square feet, about 1,500 more square feet than they had originally proposed. So I'm showing that change, and then, so we're really looking at the difference between the amount that has been provided or proposed for these projects and then what, what we're potentially looking at changing the requirement to be. So in this case, the 90 square feet per unit is pretty close to what they're now proposing. And similarly, another apartment project that illustrates this is the addition of apartments. They provided actually less than half of what they were required, paying the rest in lieu fees. So there, even with this reduction, there's still a couple thousand square feet short. And then, the comparison with the townhome projects, there, they really have been able to meet the current requirement, in one case exceeded the current requirement, so reducing the requirement for townhomes didn't really seem to be appropriate. So, the next half of the table really just compares options for a floor area-based requirement. So again, I've showed the changed numbers for the Ross Road Apartments, and I'll show that example shortly. So last time, we looked at a requirement that would have the same floor percentage as we have for office development, so 10% in the downtown transition and corridor districts, and 6% in the downtown neighborhood district. That resulted in a requirement that was significantly below what, even what the Ross Road project originally proposed. So the feedback that we got was, you know, maybe that's, that's too low. It, again, with the addition of apartments there, it actually doesn't quite get to what they provided, but, but again, that's another, a built example that we can compare this against. And then if we look at, so the new information is this notion of requiring 20% of the net floor area for apartments and 10% for townhomes. So for these apartment project, that does bring the requirement up quite a bit in the case of the addition apartments above even what, what the current requirements call for. So that may be a step too far, and so we may want to look at something in between the 10% and the 20% for the apartments. And again, for the townhomes, there's no change between the two proposals, and this requirement would, it's a little bit more than what has, than the current requirement and what's been provided, but with a 10% allowance for in lieu fee reduction, it gets close to what, what has been provided within a margin that we think designers can, can work around. So here's the revised proposal for the Ross Road Townhomes, just, I'm showing this just to illustrate where we, this has evolved. So they've, they've made some changes. They've eliminated the passage along the north side because there actually was a conflict between the requirement for the private open space that they wanted to provide for the ground floor units and the required minimum width for public passage. And there was just some, as, as the discussion here has indicated, there was some question about whether that was really a valuable public space around the backside of that apartment building. They've made some adjustments to create qualifying public open space at the corner and along 104th Avenue, and to create some public space along the Ross Road frontage. And then they've expanded slightly the, the area around the main entrance to the building and the mid-block. They've kept the through, the passage under the building and a north terrace, but not connecting to a public passageway. So I'm not sure this is exactly what, where this project's going to land, or what, where we would like to see it land, but it does now show 8,353 square feet of open space onsite, so getting close to our current requirement, or closer to our current requirement, not really very close, the requirement, current requirement would be 14,250, but close to some of the options that we're, we're looking at now. Now, while we're on this, I wanted to also illustrate that they are proposing, if you look at, at the detailed calc's, they are also proposing to get, get a little bit closer to that by transferring some of their open space requirement to an office project on 98th and 185th that is about to start construction, and where they are providing more than the required public open space along the Horse Creek corridor for the office use there. So we talked about this last time, I think we had consensus that, that we would allow transfers, but there was the question about, should there be a limit on the, on the distance for transfers? We also just, and, and here's a map illustrating what a half-mile limit would do. It would allow the transfer between the 104 and Six Oaks that we allowed previously, and it would allow a transfer between this Ross Road site and their office site at .4 miles. And just for an example, and using some landmarks that I think you all know, if a developer wound up buying the post office site and Biddle, Brooks Biddle site, that would be just over a half-mile. So if, if you choose to limit it to a half-mile, a transfer of that distance would not be And we talked last, this is another Harbor Homes project, the 98th Avenue Apartments that's nearing completion. They also fell quite a bit short of their public space requirement. Again, they, they're, excuse me, they used the space along Horse Creek, but, and they also did a connection, a pedestrian connection on 183rd. So we did talk, and I think we've got consensus that transfers between adjacent sites would be allowed, so they could have transferred or credited some of the space on their office project immediately adjacent toward their requirement here. But, and we talked about a credit for other pedestrian connections that, that help complete pedestrian networks like this one. It doesn't meet the dimensional requirements for passages in the public open space code, and a significant portion of it goes off of their property, so they, they had to get an easement in order to build, complete that connection. But we do feel that this would be something that would be appropriate to, to allow and to encourage that sort of connection. The POP, I don't know if any of you have been to visit the POP since it has opened, but they, as part of their public open space, included a passage along the backside which, which was completed on, partly on their property, partly on school district property through an easement and, and development that extends onto that school district property. So there, there has been a precedent for this sort of thing. But that's something that I didn't feel like we got direct consensus from the Commission, and I wanted to do that. So that concludes my presentation. I, I do have available, if there are any of other slides that we've seen at previous presentations that you'd like to pull up, they, they are available here, and we can go back to the, the tables, the matrix, to look at the numbers more carefully. But the three points that I would like to get either confirmation or direction from Planning Commission are, the one that I just discussed, allowing credit for connections to pedestrian network that might not otherwise qualify as public open space. Two, the question of whether we should limit the transfer between projects to a half-mile. And then the main one is feedback on this new proposal for the requirement for, of how much open space based on floor area with different amounts for townhomes and apartments, and, and whether you're leaning toward the larger requirement, the smaller requirement, or you think we should find something in between. So with that, I'm happy to take questions, and, and then public testimony if there is any, and then go into deliberations.
Great, thanks, Dave. Would you like me to take the public testimony before the questions then, or?
It's up to you. If there are any clarifying questions that you want to
Right.
touch on.
Um.
But if you're ready.
Yeah, I, I think there might be some, I have a little, a few. Commissioner Koenan?
On the credit for connections, what does that mean? How much credit is granted?
Well, the most likely one would be to just grant the square feet
Square footage of the connection itself.
Of the connection that they provide, including offsite connections that they, that they construct and get easements for.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, could you go back to the diagram of the Ross Road? Proposal, okay, thank you, right there. So for instance, there on, on Northeast 185th, that portion that leads kind of to the back of the property, are there stairs there? Can, or is that just, is that street level?
There would be some stairs, and I believe there would also be a ramped connection because there, there would have to be an ADA accessible connection.
Okay.
They did provide earlier, and I might have it in my backup slides, a sketch kind of that illustrated how that would work, but, but it'd be a combination of steps and ramps.
Okay.
One example of that, the 104, they're, they have kind of an entrance courtyard that you, the main entrance, the direct access is, is through stairs, but there is an ADA ramp that, that gets you to that level, too.
Okay. And let's see, so, and then on the slide, the proposal, can you go forward a couple slides? Let's see, I think it's the, oh, I think it's that one. So can you kind of clarify for me what the public spaces are there?
So they're, they're qualifying public open space is this, this area leading up to the, I was going to say the main entrance, but no, the main entrance is over here, that basically the area that flanks Horse Creek, so.
Okay, the ones with the circles?
Well, the circles are trees, so.
Oh, that is a tree, okay.
Basically, everything with the gridded pavement is part of their, well, some of it extends off of their property to make the connection to the sidewalk, but basically this area between the building and, and Horse Creek, which they could have fenced off and made just for private use of their tenants, but they're, they're providing it as, as public open space.
Okay. And just to clarify, so do we have anything in the code language with regards to preference to not having stairs for a public space? I think, I think we talked about it when we talked about the 104 back, I think it was Brad, there were several people, and I was, when I went back and visited, I was corrected because I thought it was a great, and it's not that it's a nice, not a good public space, but, public open space, but I, I don't know, I would, I guess, this would be more in the discussion realm, but has there been any look into trying to get away from stairs and the needing for a ramp? I think it makes for a more obvious public space rather than having stairs there.
We do, do have language that says that they do need to be ADA accessible, so that doesn't mean you can't have stairs in places, but there has to be a, an alternate route that, that you can get to, get to the spaces without going on stairs. The only limitation to that might be on a, and this is also true of any, of park spaces, that if you've got a natural topography that makes it just where there's no feasible way to provide the 1 and 12 slope, then you can exceed that, that slope, but that, that's going to be fairly rare, I believe.
Commissioner Price?
I'm trying to wrap my head around public space, one to linger. If I'm lingering, walking around, I would hesitate going upstairs to another level in a facility like this, thinking, oh, it's probably private property. So is there a way we can define public open space on the ground level versus?
Well, it is defined as, it has to be connected to the sidewalk, but beyond that, we just say that they all need to be accessible. So there can be stairs, like the plaza right outside here. Most people get to that plaza going up the stairs, but there is an accessible route that goes up the sidewalk and, and connects to the other end, so.
I think it was the Merck that has the stairs going up, and then the open space there, and then back down, and I just don't think that's very clear. And able to, and having someone able to use that as open space, but in all reality, who, who is that intended for?
Right. So there, the upper level does have a at-grade connection from the upper level of the sidewalk, and then there are stairs down to the middle level, which has a direct connection from the sidewalk and at the middle part, and then, so, yeah, the, the criticism is, or the, the concern is, is, is clear, and we're hopeful that the, the signage requirement will help make it even clearer that those are public spaces. But we think that we, we are covered. And, and for example, the POP, which has the upper level terrace as part of their public open space, they, as part of the agreement to allow that, they had to allow access through the, the main residential lobby and elevator to that, to provide the accessible, access to that space. And that's also the, the access to three of the, what they're calling townhomes that, that, that front on that upper terrace. So anybody who's, you know, going to visit those townhomes would be going through that, either that connection or the stairway that goes directly up from the sidewalk.
Good, thank you.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you might just elaborate a little bit. My recollection is we've had some discussion with the Commission previously about this issue because there were some concerns about public space looking like public space enough that people would actually use it. So I, I think what we had said at that time is we would go back and we would look at some of our standards, and I think Dave has talked about some of those. I think it's important, what I'm hearing from the Commission is that's a really important issue for the Commission. I think it probably will be for the Council as well. And I know we've said with the POP, for example, that was, that was an experiment, we're, we're going to see how that works, but it does separate it from what is typically a, a public area that would be visually accessible as well as physically accessible for the public. So I think we'll, we'll take another look at that in terms of the standards and see if we need to write something in there that's a little bit more prescriptive in terms of the access to that space and how it, how it's viewed and how it would be perceived as well. It gets a little bit difficult to do that without being overly prescriptive, but I think we can take a closer look at that and see if there's, make sure we've got some good language in there for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Koenan.
Along those lines, when we've had these previous conversations, we've also discussed the need for some standard signage to make it clear that across the various spaces in different locations in the city that this is a open public space, and you'd have the same sign in each of them so that there would be a more consistent message for that.
Yes, and I think that's what Dave was referring to when we talked about the signage, is that we need to make sure that they're, that they do have signage indicating they are public space, but also some consistency of that message.
Yes.
There, there was a comment about, I can't remember who it was, perhaps some objection to having sort of too bureaucratic looking of signs and littering up the landscape. So we did add into the signage requirement that there, there would be a standard sign that they could use if they wanted to, but they could also incorporate the public access information in an interpretive sign like the ones that have been installed at the, at the Merck and the one that was installed at the addition. So it doesn't, they don't all have to be exactly the same and the same kind of So, it doesn't, they don't all have to be exactly the same and the same kind of traffic sign sort of looking signage. That, that was the direction that, that I got and responded to in, in, in that earlier discussion, and, and we, but we would certainly bring that back, and that'd certainly be open for a discussion if, if there were concerns.
But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, where I think we ended up though, is that we provided that flexibility, but the language, the message would be consistent.
Yes.
And I think that's, that's the main thing that I'm hearing from the commission, is we want some consistency of, of the wording, the message that everybody sees on every sign, regardless of how, what the sign looks like.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I think that's correct. Okay, so, let's, let's go ahead and take public testimony. It looks like we have one person signed up, so if you could, please come to the mic and state your name for the record, and please hold your comments to three minutes, and we have Kerry Westerbeck.
It's lonely up here, I'm the only one again. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't prepare any remarks tonight, but I did want to make sure, I talked to you guys and said, thank you for working so hard on this these past months and being, giving it a really thoughtful analysis. It did seem to me, as a small developer, that we were asking for a lot of open space, and I really appreciate that the city and you guys and staff have seen that we should go in and tweak it and, and offer some alternative ways of figuring it out and some, some adjustments along the way. And especially want to thank you for listening to me when I ask for the exception, if possible, for the really small, when, when you've got 1,000 square feet required or less for infill and small projects. I think that really helped those of us who do build on small proj, build, build on small sites. And so, thank you for hearing us on that. I think I wasn't the only one asking about that, but I do appreciate that. And I think the progress you guys made and the ideas here for reducing are really, again, thoughtful, thorough, and will really create a better downtown on Oliver Bothell for us, because we want good productive use of, of every place we develop, and I think this will make sure that these open spaces are more thoughtfully designed and employed versus, you kind of just do a whole bunch as much as you can, and, and the quality suffers because of that, or they have to put in so much that the designers can't be thoughtful. So, my hope is, as is yours too, probably, is that we'll see, you know, designers bringing their A-game and giving us some good spaces, because we all need public open spaces, and it can really enhance the city, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Westerbeck. Thanks for joining us again. So, with that, I guess we can kind of move into the discussion phase of, and we can, you know, obviously ask more questions of Dave and if we, if we come across them, but I guess we, we can go ahead and kind of discuss the three topics that Dave wanted us to touch on here, and maybe give them some direction for the next time we meet on this topic. So, there's the allowing for the credit for connections to pedestrian network, trying to get a gauge on where the commission is with respect to that. Commissioner Koenan?
Well, I'll go first on that one. I like that. I think it's, you know, when we look at one of our objectives as inspiring people to walk, walking requires connections. So, I personally think there's more value to a space that connects other spaces than these little bubbles that go off and are hidden somewhere and don't go anywhere. So, I'm strongly in favor of the credit for the connections, and if it requires some easements and some offsite easements to make that connection, I think that's a, a good benefit.
I agree.
Great.
I also agree.
Great. And I don't know if the commission would be open to maybe an additional recommendation to make it as, I don't know, easy as possible with, I, I don't know, trying to avoid stairs is basically what I'm trying to get at. I mean, I realize Bothell's a hilly town, our downtown in places is reasonably flat, and so, this picture that we see right here, that's a very walkable pathway from, to get from A to B. I don't know what, if there's any kind of tolerance up here for, I mean, like you said, it's kind of hard to put it into the code, but I guess you guys have tried to, to do that.
Well, I think the, the most straightforward way would just to be, make accessible connections that, that meet, meet ADA. The only site that we've had to date where there were perhaps some, where we might have had some challenges there, is the Beardsley South Townhomes project that's going up right next to the, what they're now calling the Villas at Beardsley. And at one point, they were talking about, as part of their public open space, a connection from the sidewalk along Beardsley up, kind of along the backside of the project to connect to the upper part of, of the Villas at Beardsley project, and that probably would have been difficult to have done, to meet the ADA requirements. And it probably could have been allowed, given that it, that it wasn't feasible with the, with the topography there, but, so we thought that it was probably worth having the connection, even if it couldn't be 100% ADA accessible. In the end, they wound up going a different direction and.
Okay.
And, and I did not do that, but.
Great.
So, they're very isolated situations where you might have a, a situation like that.
Great. Okay. Well, it looks like the commission is kind of unanimously on that, on that point, so I think we've given you direction there. How about the second point, open to comments from the commission with regards to limit of transfer between projects to one half a mile or maybe another, another limit?
I'll go back to that image, if this helps.
It does. So, and just to clarify here, so, this is for the in Luffy, and this is for transfer, or, I'm sorry, this is for transferring of development, sorry, within a half mile. And can you just, just clarify again, Dave, for maybe people listening in, for people up here, with regards to why we would want to limit it to a half mile, or?
Well, I'm suggesting this because there was a suggestion from commission last, at our last meeting, that, that perhaps there should be a limit, and this is what I would propose, is a reasonable limit that is more than what we've allowed to date and, and a little bit more than what's being, being proposed currently, but that is a, kind of a, a fairly standard measure of walk distance. You mostly used in, in stationary planning, and they usually talk about quarter-mile radii from bus stops and half-mile radii from fixed transit.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
And keep in mind, this is only going to apply in the downtown where we have this requirement, so it, that's also limiting.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the other option would be not to have a limit, just allow it, any transfer within the downtown subarea.
Okay.
And.
Yeah.
Quick follow-up question, and that's any transfer between transition or the neighborhood districts in downtown?
Basically, the way I've drafted it, it would allow any transfer between any project, wouldn't, wouldn't have to be to the same zoning designation.
Okay. I mean, I think this is kind of in response to comments I brought up earlier. That's more my concern, I guess, is, you know, making sure that neighborhoods are budding single-family residences, don't become void of any open space, you know, just for ease of putting it somewhere else within the city, if a developer's developing multiple parcels. So, I, I think this is a start, like, .5 miles kind of covers the whole downtown, so I don't know that it's going to really have a, a huge impact, so I could take it or leave it. I mean, I, I think it's an interpretation of what I was trying to go for, but that, my, my main concern was just focusing on, I guess, yeah, making sure we protected some of the existing neighborhoods. You mentioned before, I think it was last time that we met, that, you know, there's existing code language that already, you know, provides setbacks and protects those spaces, but I just thought that might be another measure, because it kind of breaks the massing of some of these larger apartment buildings, as far as a required open space component, and not just transferring that across town to, you know, somewhere else that works for the developer.
Yeah.
So, if I could, I'm sorry, excuse me, Dave. So, if I could ask Commissioner Cave, if you could elaborate on that a little bit, because I'm not, I'm not understanding if your concern is about having too much of this public space next to the single-family residential neighborhoods, or not having enough?
It'd be not having enough, so kind of developing it to the full lot line potential, not really breaking up the massing against, you know, established neighborhoods that have been there for 60 years.
So, using some of this to create more of that, a little bit more of that separation, maybe, or helping to break up the, the mass of the building next to the.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know there's multiple reasons for, you know, I mean, the walking, the connectivity, the lingering, there's lots of things, but there's also kind of a, a reduction in massing in large-scale apartments, too, that was part of the focus for the open space.
Yeah. The, the open space, the public space requirement, it gets larger as you go from the, well, there's none in the, in the downtown core, and then it, it's first established in the downtown neighborhood, and then it's, it's greater in the downtown transition and corridor districts. So, there's already a bias towards more open space, but we'll give some thought to the idea of putting in some sort of a protection against having too much of the public space required in transition districts moved toward the, the core. And so, the, the one that has been done, the 104 is a downtown neighborhood district. It got transferred to Six Oaks, which was split between downtown neighborhood and downtown core. The Ross Road is a downtown transition district, and they're proposing transferring some, a fairly small amount of theirs towards, to a downtown neighborhood site. So, we, I can, we can look into whether there might be some limitations on, on that to make sure that we're not getting, losing too much of that public space in the transition districts.
Okay, and I wish I had a bulletproof solution. I'm not trying to put the brakes on this or stop any of the momentum, because I'm totally in agreement with what we're doing here, so I, I don't want to sideline, I guess, the, the progress that's being made, but it's just something that I, I was thinking about when we were going through this, just the fact that, you know, there may be some properties that are less likely to be developed due to steep slopes, or whatever the case may be, that you could kind of stockpile your open space requirement. It doesn't really meet the intent of what we're trying to do with open space, so just having a kind of a receptor site that's hard to develop, to check that box, I don't think it really meets the intention of the requirement.
That's a good point, and, and I really did kind of focus on the, the distance and not so much on that, that shifting from one district to another.
Commissioner Kurt?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation. One of the things that I'm slightly, I'm wondering about is when open space is proposed, how can we make sure that that open space translates into more of a, you know, quality areas that we can enjoy as a community? And I think that when we ask developers to provide these open spaces instead of in Luffy, if we're trying to get open spaces over in Luffy, then it should be easy for them to transfer them around. I don't think that, I mean, the whole downtown walkable portion of downtown is about a half a mile, so I'm probably fine with that radius. The thing that I'm not so sure on is that the downtown area does extend down towards that 522 corridor, and that seems like kind of a panhandle that would be, that might be difficult to, like Commissioner Cave said, either kind of concentrate the open spaces down there or export that open space away from that area and leave it kind of without the benefit. And so, that's something that I'm, I'm still not really sure on, but in general, I think that the more basic and more straightforward the requirement is, the more likely we're going to get good spaces over imposing too much, too many details into, you know, how, how far away they can be transferred, is my two cents.
Great. So, were you kind of saying that you might be open to just not having a limit?
Yeah.
Because it's basically, the limit is already what it is, because of where.
I think that the topography and the areas, the zoning areas have already kind of established a limit, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the commission on those points? So, maybe, let's go ahead and, so we can give guidance to Dave on this, let's, I guess there's two options, there's, I mean, there, there's always other options we can, if people want to bring them up, but it's the half mile that staff was not necessarily recommending, but wondering if, if that's what we wanted, or if we wanted to just not have a limit so that we could maybe open up, I don't know if that helps our cause with regards to, Commissioner Cave, do you have a comment on that?
Just one follow-up question.
Yeah.
I mean, if there was a transfer, that's still protected or under director review purview, correct? I mean, or is it not?
We, we have to agree to the transfer, yes.
Yeah.
I don't think we're taking, we're not taking that out, are we?
No, that would be a part of the development review process.
Still at discretion.
So, it seems like there is, you know, one safeguard, if it was, totally didn't make sense, we, we still have a protection to kind of make sure it fits the goal of open space as a whole. Not that we would use it often, I'm just saying, like, I don't really need the, the half a mile if.
Yeah, I agree.
It's up to director review.
So, would, would commission be okay with removing that limitation and just not having that limit requirement, or do people want to retain that?
No, I'm fine with it.
Can you, let me reframe the question just a little bit.
Yes.
I don't want to get hung up on the distance issue, that's just one approach, because I'm also hearing from some of the commissioners' comments that you have some concerns about how this might be transferred around, so do you want to put any limitations? Let's start with that. Do you want to put any limitations on a transfer of some of this public space? Either, yeah.
Yeah, for example, a percentage, a certain percentage could be transferred.
Commissioner Koenan?
Well, as, as we're reviewing this here, we're talking about allowing transfers between projects of a single developer, correct?
Correct. Typically, that's how it's been working, because otherwise, then there's some sort of a financial arrangement between the two.
Yeah.
It's like more of a transfer development rights almost in that case.
I think that gets us some protection as well.
Commissioner Cave?
I'm kind of split on it, because I think in general, we're looking for larger open spaces when possible, so, like, that's part of the reason why on small developments, we went away from the requirement. That being said, I, I would look at maybe a one-to-one property transfer. I don't know, right now, if it would be open for, if one developer owned three or four parcels, if they could, you know, consolidate all open space onto one and meet the requirements for the other three, or if it has to be one-to-one, but I think that might be one protection I would think about, is a one-to-one offset.
The, the way that we've dealt with it to date with these two, the one that has been done and the one that's being proposed, is, is we're, we try to get the developer to provide as much of the open space onsite as, as is feasible, and so we've allowed the transfer only in cases where, where they're coming up. only in cases where where they're coming up short and there's a, they make a good ar, an argument that the transfer is a is a is a good trade-off. In the case of the 104 to Six Oaks, they got us some open space on a lot that was largely downtown core that wouldn't have had in, been required to have any any public open space. In the case of the Ross Road transfer, again, we, I don't think we would even entertain a whole, you know, transferring all of it. But we recognize the challenges that they are having to provide it onsite and and the benefit of of the the open space along the Horse Creek, the other side of the the private side of the Horse Creek corridor. So that's how we've applied it to date. And we could certainly look at some code language that would provide that direction to to developers.
I'm also thinking, well, as Commissioner Cave mentioned, this is still the discretionary. So it's at the director's discretion. And I appreciate the vote of confidence. That does provide some level of protection for the city's interests. What would be beneficial, though, for any director is to have some guidance. And I'm thinking, maybe it's not specific code language, but maybe we have some guidelines in terms of how this would be applied or, because we want to make sure that where it's being transferred to, that the transfer is actually providing a benefit. It's not just for the benefit of the development to be able to do that development. It's also to make sure that wherever we're transferring it to, that that's an enhancement, that's a betterment than we would have gotten otherwise. So that's, that's, that's a basic criterion, and we use that anyway. But I'm thinking maybe if we have something like that and maybe a few more things, like what we've talked about this evening, some of the issues that the commission has brought up, and I'm sorry, I don't have any language off the top of my head, but we could, we could put some guidelines in place that say, you know, these are the things that should be considered by the director when reviewing these requests. And maybe that's in the code, maybe it's in the design guidelines. But we can figure out the the mechanics of that. But would that, would that be something the commission would like to see when we come?
I'm seeing nodding heads, yes.
Okay.
On that. So thank you for giving us that guidance. Another question I might have for Dave and you, Michael, is from a city staff perspective, is there some guidance you could give on a limitation on the amount and percentage that could be exchanged between one and another? I know Commissioner Cave was proposing maybe potentially a one-to-one. But would you be able to give us guidance on whether you would recommend?
Yeah, I think so. And like I said, we we haven't entertained, or actually, we haven't received, and and probably would not entertain a proposal that would completely transfer. So so I think it'd be very reasonable to either have a requirement or a guideline that it'd be limited to us.
So yeah, if you could come back to us, maybe with a, if you had a percentage that you think might be reasonable?
Yeah.
And some other language that would give the director some guidance.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, great.
Good input.
Thank you. And then, so your third, can you bring up that third point again? I think it just had to do with your table, potential change the floor area basis with different amount for townhomes and apartments preferences. So if anybody wants to weigh in here.
And I would go, I think maybe this would help by having the table.
That'd be great.
I think the previous direction from the commission is you like the net floor area approach versus the per-unit approach. So that's the direction we're headed, and we're testing a couple of different, as Dave said, we're kind of looking at some bookends there. Last time, we brought you the 10%. This time, we're looking at a 20%.
For apartments.
For apartments, just as a, as a starting point for that discussion, because what we heard last time is 10% maybe wasn't enough. And if you compare it to what we currently require, it seems like a pretty dramatic difference. So we're trying to find something that's closer, still workable from a development standpoint, but also still gives us some a fair amount of usable, beneficial public space that would go along with these developments.
So I've highlighted some here. I can take the highlights off if 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 you prefer, but.
So we're looking at the, the column there, the 20% NFA apartments, those ones?
Yeah.
Is that someone new? Okay.
So for example, with the the Ross Road Apartments project, they initially submitted a proposal for a little under 7,000 square feet. Actually, I think maybe their initial proposal was even less than that. And then they they made some adjustments, got it up to almost 7,000, which was a little less than half of the requirement. Now they're up to 8353. If we went with 10%, there was some, I guess, we liked the the elegance of having a percentage that works for both office and residential. So that's, that's where, why we started with the 10%. That takes it down to about 5,500 square feet and so less than than what they're actually proposing. Now, if you took out the, what is now kind of that dead end connection through the building to the the terrace on the on the north side of the building, then they'd probably be, that's probably about where they would be. With the 10%, since they're they're proposing apartments there, or if we if we up that to 20%, that's almost 11, 11,000 square feet. That's still less than the current requirement. But even with the 10% allowance for in-fee, they're still, you know, 1,500 square feet short. So so that's just one example. Addition apartments, I think, is another one where the 10% together with a 10, allowing 10% in-lufy gets them close, probably within what they could have managed with some adjustments to their design. But 20% is actually more than what we currently require. And in that project, I think would have required them to reduce the unit count in order to make it work on that site. There might have been some benefits. They may have broken it into two buildings or, but that's, that's an example, that's an example where I think we may need to find something, try to find something in between those two bookends.
In between 20% and 10%, you said?
Yeah. If if this is, and if you agree with us, we think this is the right track. And and we, I guess I.
The 20%?
No, the the idea of basing it on.
Oh, net floor, okay, right.
And so one question is, do we go with the same percentage as office and and accept a significantly lower amount? And do you want to make that recommendation counsel? Or do we find something, do we go with a different requirement for townhomes and apartments so that we can find something that's not as quite as drastic of a reduction as that?
Anybody want to weigh in on that? Commissioner Kieran?
Sure, I'll start it. I do like that net floor area approach, particularly when we look at the example of the micro apartments and the fact that uses are changing, and we want to be flexible and allow different approaches as we adopt these, this part of the code. Regarding the the difference between townhomes and apartments, what I've heard is townhomes have had no problem meeting the, by and large, meeting the requirement as it is. They're also at a lower density than we are really striving for in this area. So, and and the market is hot and they're going like crazy. So it doesn't seem to be a driving need there to to reduce it, which would lead me to separate approaches for the apartments and the townhomes. And I think you're right. Some may, I hate to split the difference, say 15, but somewhere between the 10 and the 20 does seem like it might be good for the apartments. So I guess three points. Yes, net floor area, different for townhomes, and maybe somewhere in between on apartments.
I would like to point out that for the most part, the townhomes that are being proposed in downtown are within the downtown transition district where we did, that was intended, not just for townhomes, but that was part of the vision, that we would have this variety of housing types, apartments, townhomes in the downtown. So and they're relatively dense for townhome developments. They're around between 20 and 25 units per acre, so.
It's almost, it's by their nature, though. The townhomes are are amenable to the the passageways.
Yes.
And they they get credit for something that, that's almost an amenity to them anyway. So I, I think that's fine.
And I think ideally, these these spaces are amenities, both to the the residents of the project and to the general public.
Commissioner Kurt.
Thanks. I would echo Commissioner Kieran on everything. The challenge for me when looking through these comparisons was balancing the 20%, which I don't think, I think the 20% is a little bit conservative, but the 10% is a little bit too loose. Previously, I had endorsed the 10% total NFA. And just in looking at the difference between 10 and 20%, I'm thinking maybe a 15% would be a good balance, but I haven't done those calculations. So.
Yeah. And I probably should clarify. I keep saying 10 and 20%. That's.
Right.
In the transition districts in the downtown neighborhood, it's six and and 12, again, starting with what the office requirement is in those respective districts.
Right. And I, I think that the 12% is more comfortable in the downtown neighborhood But in the downtown and the transition and 522 projects on the upper side of the chart, I think maybe a 15% might be worth pursuing.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I think you're, does anybody else want to weigh in on on either of those? Or, so it looks like there's some consensus on net floor area, and we're just, there's not necessarily a consensus on that percentage that we're giving guidance to to staff with. But it looks like there's a couple of people who weighed in with regards to something in between 10 and 20.
Any other thoughts on that from other commissioners?
Commissioner Cave.
I'm kind of in agreement. I'm definitely okay with the six and 12. Yeah, I'd like to look at the calculations to see if 15 is kind of the right number. But 20 seems a little bit heavy. Whether we drop to 17 or 15, I can't say. But I wouldn't drop below 15 on apartments for that calculation.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Cave on that. I'm getting a nod of the head from Commissioner Piceball, some agreement. So.
So can I throw you a curve ball?
Yes.
We've, we've used the 10% in-lufy as an automatic. We've talked about that, I think, in the past, and the commission was generally okay with that. That's when we were looking at a different percentage. Well, we were actually looking at more of a per-unit at that point, I think. So that's another area where we could adjust that percentage. If, say, we had a higher percentage requirement, say, something above 15%, we could also increase the in-lufy percent that would provide more flexibility. Or we could leave it at 10%. Or we could build in a two-tiered system where 10% would be at at the applicant's discretion, and then there could be an additional, although we're trying to get away from the director discretion because that's been a bit challenging on the in-lufy, but that then provides some additional flexibility on those sites that are really difficult, maybe an additional, up to an additional certain percentage. I'm not offering any numbers tonight, and we're not asking you to settle on any numbers tonight, but that's another option that we could look at. So you can adjust both of those, is what I'm saying in a very long-winded way.
Does there, is there any?
Any interest in us looking at that?
I like that approach of maybe leaving it at 20% and bumping up the in-lufy a little bit to offset the high requirement. But I think it's a good option.
Commissioner Kieran.
I'd be interested in upping the amount, although I think the 20 may still be a little high.
Okay. Commissioner Kurt.
I'm not interested in increasing the in-lufy until more direction is given on, you know, if that in-lufy is going to be directed to specific sources. I think that we should focus on reducing the criteria first. And so then it's built into the development process when feasibility is being looked into.
I think it's a, I think it's an interesting point, and I would be, I would be open to increasing the in-lufy a little bit and keeping the number kind of closer to 20. But I would be open to something a little less, too. So is that enough guidance for you guys for the next time?
We can explore a few options.
Okay.
And.
Next time, we'll ask for a number.
I do want to make one point. There were a couple of commissioners who talked about that they were, excuse me, comfortable with the 12% in the downtown neighborhood. But that's where, at least in in the case of the addition apartments, it actually results in a, in a larger requirement than, that would actually be increasing our requirement. So I'd be inclined, based on the feedback I've heard, to to try to find a middle ground in 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 both cases to present back to you.
But to also to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Kurt's point, I also appreciated that, to give us maybe more guidance, it would be nice to know kind of more of where those in-lufys are going. And I, I mean, we obviously don't, I mean, I personally, at least for myself, don't, yeah, we don't want to go too much in that in-lufy direction until we know kind of what kind of projects those are going to be able to accommodate for the city or where those monies are going and how they're being spent. Commissioner Kurt.
This is related to Dave's last comment on the 12% for apartments. When I'm looking at addition versus 98th Avenue apartments, I'm seeing a decrease with the 12% NFA for apartments in the 98th Avenue apartments.
Yes, that's right.
But an increase in the addition.
Yeah.
Is that?
And just in general, the the, the amounts are either close or, you know, small reductions or or a small increase in the case of the addition with the 12% in the downtown neighborhood.
Right. So I guess, just to clarify my previous statement, I'm comfortable with the amount that we're getting out of large apartments in the downtown neighborhood area. And so a substantial reduction there, I guess, versus what's provided, that's different than what's required. So never mind. Never mind. I'm not really sure if 12% is really reasonable. Like you said, looking for a middle ground in both cases is probably where I intended to speak for.
So Commissioner Kurt, if I could ask for a little clarification, are you saying you're comfortable with the 12% being close to what's currently required? Or looking at a percentage as closer to what was actually provided?
I am now looking for things that are closer to what was actually provided. Where my previous comment was disregard my. my previous comment was disregard my previous comment when I said that I was comfortable with 12% as an adjustment to current requirements. Yeah, I was under the impression, I don't know, I was misreading the table. But yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the current amount of provided space in downtown neighborhood projects. I don't, I don't know how that would really transfer to the, I guess that would be closer to the 6% total NFA. So yeah, I guess my previous comment doesn't really stand up to my intention, which was to bring it more in alignment with what was provided there.
Okay. Well, we can, can look around at some different percentages there as well. I just wanted to make sure
Yeah.
understanding what your direction was there.
Thank you. Yeah.
And we realize there's a lot of numbers there to kind of sort through. And I know how easy it is to get, get, get kind of twisted in comparing the different, the different columns. But I think it's all, it's all relevant information. So we're trying to give you as much information as possible to, that helps make the decision. And I eliminate, I've excluded certain projects that are really outliers. And probably the POP is one, you know, they did provide above what was required, but with a number of asterisks.
Yeah.
So that's why I haven't highlighted that. I'm trying to highlight the ones that are a little more straightforward.
Right. Commissioner Cape.
I think the easiest solution is to get rid of the in lieu fee and just have transferred development rights. But that's going to take a while.
I guess we'll touch on that later today. Okay. So hopefully we've given enough guidance, sir, Dave?
I think so. And I just wanted to get to that last slide again to remind that we do need to continue the public hearing and
To a date uncertain?
No, I think March 4th is the target date that we're looking at.
Is it?
About a month.
We didn't put it on the calendar, but
Oh, okay.
That's what we had.
Okay.
Oh, I
So I entertain a motion then from, to continue the public hearing?
To March 4th?
I move that we continue the public hearing on public outdoors, downtown public space until March 4th, 2020.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Proposed. Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hampton absent and excused. There's no study session tonight. And thanks for that presentation, Dave, and for fielding all those questions.
Thanks for all the feedback from the commission. This was very helpful discussion this evening. I think we're going to be asking you to make a recommendation, I think, at the next meeting.
That makes sense. I think that's
Pin you down. I'm saying number
That sounds great. We can get to that for sure. We're close. Okay. So now we will go into old business. We have, I guess, as Dave is going to lead us through the planning commission bylaws amendments.
I'm just queuing it up. Mike is gonna
Okay.
Need that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had this discussion. I didn't realize it had been back in September when we last discussed these. We've been waiting for some time on the agenda to come back, bring these back to you because they were not a high priority like all of the other projects that we've been working on with the commission. So we had some good discussion and direction at that time. And what you have in your packet this evening shows the proposed bylaws amendments, many of which we discussed previously. There have been a couple of additional clarifications since then, based on comments from the commissioners. So I'm not going to go through all of those unless you have any specific questions. But they are, those are in red. And then there are a couple of additional changes that I've highlighted in yellow, just to bring to your attention. These were different than what you saw previously. One of them is on page two of the bylaws, page 17 of the packet, referring to temporary chair. That was, I think, something the chair brought up. There was some ambiguity in the language in terms of which chair it was referring to, the temporary chair or the permanent chair. And so that hopefully clears that up. Added the recognition that the commission does not meet in August. And then the other main item that I want to bring back to you this evening to make sure that the commission is okay with the proposed changes here is in Article 11 absences. This is on page 20 of the packet, page five of the bylaws. And there was quite a bit of discussion from the commission last time when we talked about this and wanting to put something in place regarding total absences for the year versus just unexcused absences. Because we have very, as I think the chair pointed out, very rarely do we have unexcused absences. But we have had some challenges in terms of getting a quorum on occasion. So proposing some language here about if any member accumulates two consecutive unexcused absences, just clarifying some language that was already in there, or a total of three unexcused absences. And then the new language is or a total of nine excused absences from regular meetings and/or public hearings during a calendar year. So there are two pieces to this. One is that additional total of nine excused absences. And the discussion from the commission last time was, should that be a certain percentage of the number of meetings that we have? We went back and forth about some different possibilities there. So this is fewer than half, because we, I think we settled on, we have, could have as many as 22 meetings a year, not meeting in August. Some other meetings get canceled. So that would be a little less than half of the meetings for the entire year. And that would be just referring to excused absences. The second piece of it is what action, if any, would the commission take in that instance? And the language here is that the commission would then consider whether to recommend removal. So it wouldn't be an automatic. It would be something that the commission could then talk about. Are there extenuating circumstances? Is there other considerations that you would want to take into account before deciding whether to make a recommendation to the city council? And it would go to the city council. Ultimately, it is their decision whether to remove a commissioner. So that's the language that's proposed. I also went back and looked at the total absences, excused absences for this year, not mentioning any names.
Thank you.
No one exceeded nine or had nine. We had from zero to seven were the most excused absences that we had. We had one, two, three, four commissioners that had five or more. So nine, everybody's well within that range, just for information, however you want to use that.
Great. Thank you, Michael. So, oh, yeah. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Commissioner Kieran.
Yes. One, well, two. Whether they're questions or comments, I don't know. Going to the latter part, do we still have a council liaison? Didn't the
Same question.
Remove? Didn't, didn't in the last council organization, they talk about eliminating liaisons to the committees?
There was, there was discussion about that. I don't know if there was any discussion at last night's council meeting. I didn't stick around for that part of the council conversation. So I don't know if that came up. I can certainly follow up on that. My recollection of the previous time that came up at council when they did the committee assignments is they didn't make any liaison assignments or changes at that time. And there was a question raised about whether to continue that practice. But I don't believe there was a decision about whether to do that or not.
Okay. Yeah, I recall there being a discussion of the liaisons.
Yes.
But it, so current status, to best of your knowledge, is unresolved.
Yes.
And were they, well, I guess we would leave this language in here then. And if they resolve that they're not be liaisons, we delete it?
In terms of what goes on the agenda, is that
No, as far as just what's in the bylaws here, we're saying reports from liaison.
And the agenda, probably.
In the agenda, in the list for the agenda. Yes. I would, I would suggest leaving it for now.
Okay. All right. And the other question, should the bylaws identify the number of members of the commission? Or is that in the city code somewhere?
I believe that's in city code. I'll double check that. But
Because we're basing the quorum on the number of members, but there's no reference to the number of members here.
That's a good question. I will look that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do that now.
Commissioner Cape.
I'm, I'm leaving the commission soon. So my recommendation probably holds the least weight of anyone up here. But on page 20, with regards to the number of excused absences, and this coming from someone that missed last meeting with an excused absence, I think nine is too high of a number. There is a stipend associated with this position. And if we're batting 50% or thereabouts on attendance, I don't know that we're necessarily doing the job. So in my mind, it would, should be reduced to seven or so, seven-ish, seven or six. Because there's, you know, a lot of conversations that happen from meeting to meeting. And if we were missing that many, I don't know that we can be effective.
Is there any other discussion up here or comments with regards to that, that number being lower, potentially lowered or kept the same?
I, I don't have a preference, per se, but I do understand where Commissioner Cape's comments are coming from. I think the fact that there are six applicants vying for three open positions on this commission speaks for itself in how the community values the feedback of this commission and recommendations that it makes to council. And I think that, I mean, attendance is pretty basic. It should be a part of the, a part of the job here. So I understand where Commissioner Cape's comments are coming from, and I would support that. But I would also support the current language as well. So I don't have a preference.
Is there anybody, any other comments with regards to that particular topic? And clarified, too, I just, just as a comment before I weigh in on it, that it, you know, this, this number, if we reduce it, does not mean that the person does not have a chance to speak on behalf of, or, you know, why, you know, or how the next year is going to be different or whatever. So it's not an automatic removal.
And it's not retroactive. That's the other thing. I think that came up last time.
Okay.
So this would be when this goes into
Exactly, going forward.
For this year, essentially, if the commission adopts these this evening. And to get back to Commissioner Kieran's question, the Botham municipal code identifies seven positions and the appointment dates for those. So that's, that's in the code.
So it would be unnecessary to have it here. Thank you. That was my
Yeah.
Question.
And I thought so, but I wanted to make sure before I said that, because you're right, if it's not, it should be in here.
One quick note that we, I think we've discussed briefly prior, but I guess what makes a rule like this on page 20 a little bit difficult is the position's not filled until March of whatever the next year is, it seems like. Right now, that's the, that's the cadence. And that really puts a burden on the commission, you know, between when someone's pulled off, off the board. So I, I don't know. That's, I wish we had some vehicle to do a mid, or the council had a vehicle to do an appointment mid-year. Okay.
They do. They can, they can do that. And the question was posed to me by the city clerk's office when Commissioner Merrell Cook resigned back in, I believe it was October. And I felt, given the number of meetings we had left through the end of the year and before the process was going to begin to fill those positions, that it wasn't necessary to do that at that time. So that, that was my direction to the city clerk's office. But had we requested the council fill that position, they would have done that process.
And we have done mid-year appointments in the past.
I would be open to, on that comment, I would be open to also reducing that number of nine. That I think that does seem a little bit high because it also just, like, as I mentioned, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that that particular member is dismissed. Person can stay on. Life happens, things come up. There are reasons, you know, why people may not be able to attend. But, you know, we're only asking for, you know, while it's essentially a volunteer position, it's with a small stipend, it's two meetings a month for, for a position that we have people more than the actual number of slots applying for. So I'd be open to a smaller number than nine. Commissioner Kieran.
Looking at it, I think where there may be more of a concern is you could have nine excused plus three unexcused, putting you over half of the, you know, say you, say you missed eight excused absences and two unexcused, maybe if there were a total cap.
Didn't even think about that.
Just total absences?
Well, I think three unexcused is good. I mean, if people aren't checking in, that creates a real challenge for the chair to know whether there's a quorum and how to proceed. But if we said three unexcused or a total of nine, including excused.
Or just say total absences?
Well, I, again, I do think it's, we should keep in a small number of unexcused absences. I don't think it's too much to ask people to notify. But then to have the total, consider those three as well.
I see. I guess, I guess, is it not right? You could say, or a total of nine absences, total absences? And that would, that would, in that, you're
Somehow wordsmithing it, yeah.
Yeah.
So you have a total cap of nine, regardless of whether excused or unexcused. If you miss nine meetings, then the commission considers whether or not to recommend removal.
I could see that. I mean, would it, as, as it stated here, getting someone up to, you know, you could, what, you could be eight plus two. So you could be 10 and not trigger either of these. And that seems like a lot of meetings to miss.
Yeah, I agree.
So if we added three with a total of nine, I think that kind of splits the, maybe even goes further then, because that would lower the number
For me, that doesn't
Excused to six.
Yeah. That doesn't change the nine number because I don't, I'm in, I don't know if I maybe have given one unexcused absence in the time I've been chair. So then we're pretty lenient when it comes to being excused for a meeting. I would sure like to, I don't know, I would, my preference would be for that number to be an eight, eight or seven, one of those.
I agree with, oh, Fisher Picer.
Do we have an onboarding or an offboarding procedure to where we understand why these people are resigning, why they want to join? Because I look at, I look at people that, you know, with careers, families, people that are retired, people who don't have families. And I have my own set of issues with work and family where I don't, like, Commissioner Kieran, kids are old, they're out of the house, retired, he may have more time. Carson maybe hasn't started the family yet, whatnot. So do we know when these people resign, what, what the challenges are? So when we do bring new people on, hey, by the way, you know, there is a time requirement. And should we be looking for certain types of individuals?
The vetting process is done by the city council through the interviews. So I can only presume, I'm not part of that process. I can only presume that they talk to them about what the requirements are in terms of attendance and what the role of, of the commissioner is, regardless of which board or commission they're being appointed to. And then we do, as, as we, I think we did with you and also Commissioner Kerd, when you came on board, we, the staff did an orientation and we talk about the importance of attendance and that as well. As far as why people leave, I think it varies. You know, there's typically personal reasons, usually just, oftentimes, I think it's too many conflicts.
And I think not understanding the importance of attendance until I've been here for a certain amount of time where something happens, you miss something, frankly, you would just feel very quiet when you're talking about a subject that was talked about the meeting, the meeting prior. And like, I can't vote on this because I don't, I wasn't here. I feel bad to even say anything. So if, when people are leaving or resigning, it'd be nice to know kind of, you know, hey, you don't have to, you know, get into it. But was there an issue why you'd want to resign? And that would be nice to know for the commission.
Kind of an exit interview. That seems reasonable. That's very good. So would the commission be open to the small change if any member accumulates two consecutive unexcused absences or a total of three unexcused absences or a total of eight total absences from regular meetings? of eight total absences from regular meetings? So that would- I'm seeing nodding their heads. Okay, great. So-
Maybe after total, you put excuse and unexcused, just to make it real clear.
Yeah, yeah, whatever wordsmithing you guys think, without being too wordy.
I'll just add, so a total of eight excused or unexcused.
Yeah.
A total of eight-
Combined.
Excused and unexcused. It should be and in that case, absences. That's a simple change.
Great. Thank you.
Any other-
I have a quick question with regards to the, or just one comment on the proceedings. So it goes from staff reports, and then we've been doing member reports, which I love, because I get to hear from Commissioner Curd on a, at every meeting, just kidding. Actually, it's great, I do, I'm kidding. It's great. But so, can we put that in there? Can that be like, would that be number nine, staff reports, the member reports?
It's actually a number seven. Reports from council liaison, members and committees.
Oh, sorry. Okay, okay, just, okay. It was just in a different order on my, on the-
Yeah, word-
Agenda. Okay.
We enjoy your-
Clarifying.
Commissioner Curd as well.
Okay. So it looks like we all have it all, and then that liaison one. And then, do we have a Roberts Rules of Order book? Thank you very much, of course you have one.
Bring it to every meeting now.
I don't.
And I, I read it regularly.
Great, well-
If there are no more changes-
Yeah.
I, I haven't found anything that says we have to do a public hearing, or notice, or anything. I think you can just adopt these this evening, if, if you would prefer. And then I can make those changes, and, and I'll send you all a complete copy, clean copy.
So entertain a motion then to approve as amended with the amendments that we talked about today? Okay.
I move to adopt the Commission bylaws as amended today for the planning commission of the City of Bothell.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners present, with the exception of Commissioner Hampton, who's absent, absent and excused. And with that, we will move into, move into staff reports.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, and I want to thank the Commission for your letter to the City Council, and Commissioner Pystrop for speaking at City Council last evening on the presentation on the docket. The Commission, the, excuse me, the Council approved the request to fill Mr. Blackburn's position early. So we closed the advertisement for the position on Monday. Last check, we had eight applications. I don't know that all of them are qualified, but we have eight applications. I know at least some of them are qualified, from my quick look through that. So we will start the, the process of reviewing those and then setting up interviews. And hopefully have someone on board and sometime in March, April at the latest. So that was very good news. It was a unanimous endorsement by the Council to do that. So again, thank you for the Commission's input on that. In terms of the docket, I'm sorry, did you have a-
Just a quick question, is it the intent of the City to, so Bruce is going to hand over all these projects to this individual, or is Dave going to take on some of the role? Do you know that at this point?
That's, that's really up to the Director's discretion, as far as assigning that. The, the intent in doing this is to really let Bruce focus on Canyon Park, with some work on buildable lands, and then have the, the new person come on board to take on other projects that we would not have gotten to otherwise, but also to sort of shadow Bruce through the rest of the Canyon Park process, so that when we get, as far as we can, while Bruce is still here, we probably won't have it adopted yet. So there'll be some processing work that needs to be done, but the bulk of the subarea plan and the regulations and all of that should be in place by that time. So the person would process that, pick up the buildable lands, and then some other projects as well. We may shuffle some things, you know, we'll, we'll have some conversations about that among staff, but that's, that's the intent at this point.
Thank you.
And then as far as the docket, similar to what you saw, I laid out some options for the Council based on the staffing level. With the, the two-point-three staffing level that was approved, we're able to do everything that we had proposed in the docket. They did make a couple of swaps. There was a desire to do two of the items that the Commission had added to the docket, one having to do with the transfer of development rights. So the way that, the way that that was written in the, the task list was really to explore that. So we don't have the resources, because we'd also need consultant help, as Dave reminded me last night when the Council was talking about this. It's something that we'd need some consultant help to actually put in place, the TDR program. But this will allow us to look into the programs that exist in King and Snohomish Counties and see if we can participate in those. I also point out to the Council that we do have a TDR, sort of a similar exploration as part of the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Work Program. So we'll be looking at that, but that's specific to the Canyon Park Subarea. Whereas the other TDR task is really looking at that more broadly, to other parts of the city, and looking at external programs and how we might participate in those. So that'll set us up to do something as far as TDRs in the next, the next docket next year, if the Council wants to continue to pursue that. The other item had to do with cottage housing. They wanted us to at least begin work on that this year, maybe not get all the way through it. So that goes into our, our docket as well, under the Affordable Housing provisions. So really good discussion.
Excellent.
There was, it was unanimous from all, all six of the Councilmembers that were present last evening for everything that we had recommended, the sharing of the cost for the micro apartments, the code amendments we'll have to do for that, basically not charging the nonprofit developer to do the code amendments for parcel A development, and then the staffing, as well as the, the changes to the, the two changes to the docket. So good discussion, and thanks again for the Commission's input and support on that.
Thank you.
One, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
One other item, but you wanted to say-
Oh, no, I just, it was, it's this little side. I'm glad to have gotten the TDR move forward. I know that, I know that Vice Chair Cabe, that's been a big kind of thing, that he's, he's wanted to see moved up. And I was, I was the second, I played second fiddle though, because my, my solar requirement and/or incentivization was, was voiced, but there was not enough room. So sometime, someday. So congratulations.
The way that we came up with the hours to do those two things, because the Council had to make some choices, was to just, essentially defer all but one of the housekeeping items that we had in there. So we had a pretty good chunk of time in there for that. We're going to do just item one under the housekeeping, which has to do with our current, our SEPA process right now. I don't know if I can explain this, but basically, we have some requirements on ourselves that create some challenges for us, particularly as we're working through the Canyon Park adoption process. So we want to try to get that sorted out, so we don't come back on ourselves on that one.
Commissioner Cabe.
Quick question, could you then send us a copy of the adopted docket?
Certainly. Be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a little bit of cleanup to do on it.
Yeah, when it's-
Great.
Happy to do that. Yep, I can do that.
Thank you very much, Michael.
I have one other item, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no worries.
One other quick item, so Canyon Park, I wanted to just highlight for the Commission, that is the only item on your agenda for the next meeting on February nineteenth. So we're going to devote a couple of hours to that, and it's a follow-up to the discussion we started at the previous meeting. This is really focusing on the preferred alternative. We're not asking you to make a recommendation at the next meeting, but we really want to get you to the point where you're going to be comfortable making that recommendation at the next meeting in March. So just want to let you know, we're going to answer the questions that you had, bring you some additional information, talk about some changes that we've talked about on staff, that we've had discussions with the consultants about. They're bringing back a revised land use plan, we're going to talk more about some of the transportation mitigation. And, and just want to set you up for the, the idea that we really need you to work through this. We had a great discussion last time, we want to continue that, and really get to the point where you can make a, a recommendation on a preferred alternative at the meeting following that one. I think we've set it up for March, is it the third or the eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Or the eighteenth, I mean, the eighteenth.
Both.
Yeah. So, yeah, if we need the eighteenth, I think, we're going to try to do it on the third, if you can get to a recommendation there. It's really important to us that we do that for a couple of reasons. One is, we have a schedule, a really tight schedule we're trying to maintain, we're already somewhat behind on that. The other reason is, because we have three Commissioners, we're going to have three new Commissioners in April. We'll have one, before that, Council will make the appointments at their meeting on March third. So technically, that Commissioner filling the vacant position will start on March fourth. So we'd have one new Commissioner for that part of the discussion, but we've got three new Commissioners in April. We'd really like to get the preferred alternative at least done with, with this group that's been working through it for, for so much time. So I've probably talked too much about that, but I-
No.
That's really important, I just wanted to make sure I conveyed that.
Yes.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I've got a quick question about the upcoming Canyon Park Subarea Plan Preferred Alternative study. Is there going to be a more major update to the draft EIS that will be published soon, or is that, it's kind of in its final state?
The, the draft EIS is in its final state, the comment period is closed, so, and I think we got a little bit of a, in some summary of what the comments we had received at that point. There will be a final EIS that will come out, and that'll be the planned action EIS that will accompany the plan and the regulations. And all of that is then adopted by the City Council. So the Commission will still be looking at the regulations and the planned action as part of its review, but those will come after this discussion about a preferred alternative, because that's the basis for the rest of that analysis, including the environmental review.
I see. So the preferred alternative discussion will revolve around public comment that was made, or what, just the adjustments that we had discussed during the study session? Is there going to be substantial? I mean, reading through the, the draft EIS was no small task, and so I just, if we're going to be making, you know, judgment calls pretty quickly, I'd just appreciate as much possible notice ahead of time to really pour through the documents, and I think everybody else would do so.
And, and thank you, yes. And that's one reason I wanted to alert you tonight to what our schedule is and what our, what our intent is, is to get that preferred alternative recommendation from the Commission at their March fourth meeting. So-
Okay.
Yeah, we've got the next month. So if, if you do have questions, if you do need some additional information, if you could let me know right now, because Bruce is out. But we'll, we'll try to, if we have that information, we'll certainly, you know, incorporate that into the next meeting. It may be that some of that information would come out of the final EIS. So we may not be able to answer every single question, or to the level of detail that, that you might need at this, or that you might want at this point, I should say, but we will provide you what you need to make that decision on a preferred alternative.
Understood. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oh, yes, Dave?
Just a calendar item. The calendar in your packet shows on the March eighteenth that we'll bring, being, bringing back the critical areas regulations for a, a study session, but we will need some more time to prepare that. We're bringing back the same consultants that worked with us on the Shoreline Master Program to help with that analysis, particularly the best available science analysis. So, so you can scratch that off the-
Okay.
March eighteenth.
Thank you.
I think we plugged something else in, but I don't recall what it is.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
But we'll, we'll give you an updated, updated calendar in the, the next packet.
Okay. Fantastic. All right, and your member reports?
We all want to hear it.
Reports, okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Say it.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.